There we go.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. Good morning. Sorry about that little technical difficulties. Welcome to the regular school board meeting for May 9, 2023. I want to first start out with Ms. Foreman, reading the district's vision and then introducing invocation.
The school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. And I'd like to introduce, most of us know him, is Reginald Goff, Reggie Goff, our project director in the Department of Construction. He's, I'm learning that we have many religious leaders under the employ of the school district. And so I asked him to do the invocation today. Reggie is an ordained minister and his congregation is the Divine Destiny Christian Center. And I'm so thankful that you're here. Thank you.
Coming up, yeah. Very please stand.
Good morning, everyone. Let us bow our heads. Father, we just thank you this morning for the opportunity to come into your presence and to invoke you into this meeting. For we need your wisdom, we need your knowledge, we need your understanding. And we ask you by your spirit to move upon these board members, our superintendent, and all those who are conducting business for the Manatee County School District, the parents and the visitors who are represented here today. We thank you for your presence. We thank you for your protection over our students, over our teachers, over our administrators, over our campuses, Father. And we just give you praise and we give you honor and the glory for what you're doing in this place, that the business of the people will be conducted with integrity and peaceful surroundings, Father God, with peaceful deliberations and with decisions that will be brought about that will bring a benefit to this community and this district. We give you praise and honor for this, Father, and we thank you for your goodness towards us. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Think you may be seated. Item number five, informational only. No board action required for those leaves of absence and year-to-date charter, financial statements, and quarterly ESS report. Item number six, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second.
I do have some items that I would like to pull.
Okay.
Here. They are items 12, 24, 25, and 32. And it's primarily for discussion with the board. We don't get the opportunity to talk a lot about some of the consent items, and these are some that I felt that the whole board should discuss.
Okay.
And that's all.
You got that, Ms. Cox? 12, 24, 25, 32?
Can you repeat that?
12, 24, 25, 32. Uh huh. Any other discussion about the agenda?
Do we have to amend the motion then to?
No, I think she just pulls.
Hold on.
She pulls and they automatically pull. Yeah, we don't vote on.
Unless you have something that you want to pull some.
Yeah, no, we don't have, we don't vote on whether or not we approve her pulling. We automatically get the right to pull. But we do have a motion and a second for the agenda. And do we still need to vote manually? Okay? Yep, absolutely. Ms. Tatum?
Aye.
And show hand for her search. Aye.
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 Thank you. Passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Item number seven, approval amendments. Superintendent Saunders?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes from school board meeting April 25, 2023, and school board workshop April 28, 2023.
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Foreman and a second by Ms. Bray. Any discussion? No? All right, we'll go ahead and vote. We'll start with Ms. Messenger.
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Five to zero. Moving on to item number eight, student celebrations. Mr. Barber, you want to come on up? We have high school juniors named the Sunshine Scholars, so love to get them up here and celebrate them, absolutely.
Yay.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, board members, Superintendent Saunders. I don't know if it's just me, but it seems like there's a lot going on this month, so but.
Not just you.
It's great to have these young men here. Each school year, school districts across the state of Florida select two of their top high school juniors in the areas of science, technology, engineering, and math, or as we know it, STEM. And those students are named Sunshine State Scholars. So this year, the Florida Department of Education celebrated more than 100 Sunshine State Scholars and their parents during a special conference held in Orlando in April, where they were able to make connections and engage with Florida's top post-secondary education institutions and employers that specialize in the field of STEM fields. Out of the more than 100 Sunshine State Scholars at this conference, 28 were presented with a one-year scholarship at one of Florida's higher education institutions. It's a special privilege for me to announce that both of our Sunshine State Scholars were one of those 28 scholarship winners. So the school district of Manatee County's 2023 Sunshine State Scholars are Braden Bernard of Parrish Community High and Matthew Mauer of Southeast High, so.
Now again, they're high school juniors, so they're going to be around for a little while
longer, but I wanted to give them an opportunity to just say a little bit about what their plans are for the future, what they hope to do, so.
My name is Braden Bernard. Next semester, well, next year, I anticipate on graduating with my AA as well as my high school diploma, and then I plan on transferring to hopefully University of Florida to major in biochemistry with a minor in mathematics.
That's good for you. Good for you.
My name is Matthew Mauer. Next year, I hope to complete the IB diploma program at Southeast High School and hopefully be admitted to University of Florida, where I will pursue pursue a career in biostatistics with a minor in social sciences.
Wonderful.
As the superintendent said recently, nobody succeeds in isolation, and as part of that, just want to, if we could have your parents stand up. I think we have another family member here, sister. And then the principals, Ginger Collins of Southeast High and Craig Little of Parrish Community High. And they came down, they had, they're having to miss a little school right now, so I know they want to hurry and get back, so.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And you don't go anywhere? Next item is you.
Yes, yes.
Good moments, good news moments.
That's right, good news moment. And speaking of exceptionally bright students, our good news moment for this month has to do with that, and rather than tell you about it, I'd just like to show it to you. So if you look at our.
Three, two, one. All right, everybody. Let's welcome our new educators to the school district of Manatee County.
Today, we had an amazing opportunity to celebrate the future teachers for the school district of Manatee County. Ten graduates of the University of South Florida College of Education who have all agreed to work at the school district of Manatee County for the 23-24 school year.
To have this event today, to sign the contracts that these students are going to actually have jobs immediately and graduate knowing where they're going is just phenomenal.
I'm just blown away after today. I mean, the best way to graduate is to graduate with a job. To also hear that I could be guaranteed a job after commencement, I mean, I just feel incredibly lucky.
We thank you for your commitment, and we eagerly look forward to what each of you will bring to our students, because we know that's really what it's all about.
This is just the first for us at USF College of Education. We have an amazing partnership with the school district, and I see just great things on the horizon.
And our new educator, Jessica Bailey.
I am very excited. I've been waiting for this day ever since they told us, but I am elated to be a teacher because I've been working very hard to get to this point. I feel very well-prepared for my own classroom through all of the internships, so I definitely think that the College of Education at USF is extremely important.
Klein has hired two USF graduates. Both of them bring a positive energy to the students and just wonderful references and wonderful experiences from USF. School district of Manatee County is filled with wonderful, dedicated people who are committed to the betterment of students and families, and it's nice that we have 10 new ones joining us very soon.
Just a tremendous example of community collaboration, and that benefits both the school district and the University of South Florida. And for that video that you watched was done by the professionals at Manatee Schools Television. They do a tremendous job. And then our good news guru is Melissa Parker. But for all kinds of good news, just go to manateeschools.net/goodnews. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I know we spoke about that last, I think it was last board meeting when that took place, and what a phenomenal connection there, and really being able to to bring those students in and become new teachers, it's great to have a pipeline. So exciting about that collaboration with USF. Brings us to item number 10, public comment. Well, we have two. I know one is not here, told me he's not coming. So Robert C. Gauz, come on down.
Always different to be standing on this side.
Right?
But thank you for letting me speak. My name's Bob Gauz, and y'all know me, I'm on that side. I know you guys are getting ready to make a very, very important decision, you're starting your interview process soon, and I just thought I would offer some thoughts as to things that you might want to ask and get information on. At the end of this process, you're going to be offering somebody probably a three-year term. Everybody's going to put their best foot forward, and probably for them, at least two of them, you're only going to see that best foot. You know both feet on the other one, but this doesn't say that any of them are bad choices. This is just to say things that I think you ought to be looking at. You've got three different districts. You know, it's hard to compare different districts. I mean, if you've got a district that's got 5% of the students learning to speak English compared to a district like Manatee that's got 15% of the students learning to speak English, it's hard to compare when you just say, well, one district's got a higher grade. Well, you know, sometimes there's a lot of other stuff in the individual student cohorts that that go into that that make Manatee County different. And so I think you have to pay attention to that. How are how are the cohorts, the student cohorts doing by district compared to Manatee District? How is the student, how's the district progressing by comparison to Manatee School District? Because Manatee School District's actually progressed quite well, especially under Superintendent Saunders, who I hate to see going, but you know, that's not my decision. Only one of the three districts that's got a candidate in for this job has adult career technical training at the college, MTC. The other districts do it at the colleges, and they don't run it. But I personally believe that career education is going to be critically important going forward. I think, I mean, I didn't know it would be here, but I probably should have. Mr. Horton's back there. He can probably tell you how desperate the construction firms are looking for people in the construction industry, but that's true everywhere. So career education is a critically important skill. Manatee County School District has one of the best in the nation, in part because one of the candidates' leadership of that program, over the time he was brought here to help make it a better. We went from a relatively obscure district in that field to recognized nationally as one of the best. So those are things I think you have to look at. Obviously, we all know who I support. It's not because I think anything ill of the other candidates, it's just that, you know, I've learned over the time that I got to know him, he's honest, he's trustworthy, he's smarter than most, and he does things with integrity. I think one of the reasons that you're seeing a lot of support within the district for him is not because he's from the district, that's not why I support him. I support him because I think he'll do the right things for the district, the right things for our students. And at the end of the day, that's what you care about, you know? It's not about taking someone from inside or outside, it's who do you think gives our district the best chance to succeed? Right now, we're doing pretty good, I think. So, you know, that's what I look at, but I know you guys have a tough decision, I just want to give you some thoughts on things that you might want to look at and and get answers to. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments. Laura, you said we are up? Okay. And is granicus, we can vote on granicus now? Okay. So we'll move to item number 11, the consent items. Superintendent Saunders?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for May 9, 2023.
That's of course, we're removing 12, 24, 25, and 32 from the consent items. Do we have a motion?
I moved. Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Were you able to do that on granicus?
We may need to get out and get back in.
I mean, I'm hitting it, but it doesn't seem like it's doing anything because I moved, let me log out.
Okay, no worries. So Ms. Messenger was the first, the motion. The second was Ms. Bray. So we'll go ahead and continue to do physical votes. No worries. Okay? Mr.?
Aye.
Tatum? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes, five to zero on the consent items. Minus 12, 24, 25, 32. So I'm, what's that?
I was gonna say, I logged back in, so let's see if that makes any difference.
Did you log out, log back in?
I logged out and logged back in, so we'll see if that makes any difference.
Okay, I will too, before we move to the public hearing.
It may make no difference. Let me hit motion. Now I can, so. Oh, yeah, I can stop.
Okay.
Yeah, I can.
Yep, I can do it to him, but draw. Yeah, okay.
So is that what you did, sign?
Yeah, just log out and log back in.
Upper right, sign in.
As y'all are doing that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for the board, so we can discuss the proposed amendments to policies, answer questions, already that. So Mr. Chapman, if you want to come on up.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
Superintendent, so these are a set of policies that are in front of you to to vote on. The Board had a workshop on these policies on April 28, and the edits were made per your direction. And so what you have in front of you is revised policies due from those edits on the April 28, and today, there's a public hearing, because these policies have been out for public comment for 30 days or more. So here they are in front of you for your consideration, and I'll take any questions or.
I know we worked on this. Any board members, any questions on any of the policies? Yes, Ms. Tatum?
I don't have any questions, just for the public who might be watching. I would just like to let them know that you and I spent a lot of time together talking about these things, so I have reviewed them, and I'm not happy necessarily, that's not the right word, but confident in policies and had my questions addressed, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so anyone can come up for public comment if they would like. You don't have to sign up for this one, so anybody in the audience would like to come up for public comment?
Mr. Chair, I would suggest that we have Mr. Chapman give a quick synopsis.
Sure. Yeah.
I concur.
Thank you. So we've got the first policy as a set of policies, only because it's, our policies are set up with our different job classifications. So policies 12, 10, 32, 10, and 42, 10 needed to be updated per administrative code change. So that needed to be updated. Really, the legislature changed some issues when it came to parental rights, so we made those changes. The next policy, 12, 13, again, is a reflection of new, recent legislation that passed, and so that changes the federal statutes, which then changes our codes. Policy 2111 is a, just a slight technical change in our Title I program, our Title I policy. Policy 2271, again, there was some statutory changes, minor, but we needed to change that in our policy. Policy 2416, if you remember, this is one where we'll wait on more clarification from either the Department of Education or the State Board. So the Board Attorney felt like we should just wait on that, and so we removed that policy. 2520, policy 2520, again, as a result of recent legislation, and this is where we wanted to make sure that we added the wording from, again, more parental rights and parents having access to our, make sure in our structural materials that take place in our schools. Policy 3120, again, a minor change here, updating some language on the adjunct teaching certificate language. 6480, was it, again, a change to some statutes when it comes to our budgeting. 8320, again, minor due to some changes when it came to a very bureaucratic name of a department up in Tallahassee, and they changed their name, so we had to change it in our policy. And then 8600 has to do with our bus transportation, and again, a change from an administrative code stating that if, to make sure that our drivers are trained on CPR and on knowing when our students have medical issues that are driving our buses, to make sure our kids stay safe.
Excellent. Thank you. Does that change anyone's opinion on the? Does that change anyone's opinion on discussion? No? We're good? Okay, thank you. And I see no more public comment, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And we are going to reconvene the regular meeting so that we may now vote on the approval to amend school board policy. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
On the floor, we have a motion from Ms. Spray?
I'll second.
Oh, it's working now. I'm sorry, Granicus is working. Yep.
Yep.
We have a motion. We have a second. Uh, any discussion on the amendments?
I just thought we needed a superintendent recommendation, but I could be wrong.
It doesn't say next to it, but I'm glad to hear the superintendent's recommendation.
It, it'll be lengthy. I recommend the amendments of the following policies. Twelve, ten, thirty-two, ten, forty-two, ten, twelve, thirteen, twenty-one, eleven, twenty-two, seventy-one, twenty-five, twenty, thirty-one, twenty, sixty-four, eighty, eighty-three, twenty, and eighty-six hundred.
I just wanted to hear her read all that.
Good. I got many more times to do that, so I was a little bringing in there. All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. Uh, no discussion, I see. So let's go ahead and vote using Granicus, please. Uh, and it passes five to zero to approve the amendments to school board policies. Uh, item number thirteen, no more public comment for any new business items. Uh, number fourteen, new business pulled from the consent. Item number twelve-
Item number twelve.
Was approval to purchase and continued legal services for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four from Rob Robinson Attorney. Um, estimated in the amount of ninety thousand dollars.
Right.
Me to make a recommendation?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead and make the recommendation.
Yes, uh, I recommend the approval to purchase and continue legal services for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four for Rob Robinson Attorney, P A S D M C, number twenty-four dash oh, oh, one, two, dash R G, estimated in the amount of ninety thousand. Uh, I will just give a little summary so before. Uh, this is uh, an attorney that the Board has contracted with for legal services from a past employee, um, that's probably about eight years old, outstanding. Um, and that is the anticipated cost of the annual attorney's cost for uh, that former employee within the district.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Do we have a second so we can discuss?
Yeah.
Do we have a second? And we have a second? So discussion, Ms. Spray?
Discussion. We have in front of us, uh, when I had, first of all, let me say this. When the agenda that I had my briefing with had consent items under eleven or twelve point one, twelve point two, so forth, and then after it was printed, it was now eleven point one. So I just want to make that distinction that if there's a change like that, I'd like to know in advance because I do make notes on the number of what's on the agenda.
Ms. Spray, can I just?
Sure.
When we have our briefing, it's in draft form.
Right.
So when we publish on Tuesday, if there's any edits or changes based on any of the conversations, things could be renumbered at that time. So you will have to look at the published version i- i- and see because-
But that is-
When we-
Yeah, well-
Laura, Ms. Cox sends that to us, uh, in the PDF as, as she's attaching it-
Right.
To, to the site.
So the original one is draft, and then Tuesday is the formal one.
Right, I see the formal one once it's published.
Yeah.
Right, so I would just like that little, we did change the consent items from twelve to eleven. And the only thing we pulled from the briefing was reports and presentations. So that's what bumped up from my briefing draft to the published one. That's the only thing that changed. It's just a mechanical thing. I get, I get things changed. Okay, back to item twelve point two, uh, for the attorney fee. Looking at the historical with the page that we get, historicals were in the twenties. Twenty-four thousand, twenty-three, twenty-nine, twenty-seven, and now all of a sudden, we're jumping to ninety. So me looking at that makes me think, why are we jumping from twenty-seven to ninety all at once? I had thought we had a conversation to reduce that down to fifty, just to stay within kind of a range. But I just thought that was an awful big jump. That's why I pulled it.
Sure, Ms.?
Can you? Yeah, if somebody could expand on why?
Okay. Well, to begin with, Ms. Spray, this for, this particular attorney is retained at the Board direction based upon a prior representation of an employee. And historically, the spend is the spend. Um, this particular case has languished, and I'm using the right word-
Right.
For over eight years. And this is only an estimate. I know that last year it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. It was in fact reduced this year to ninety, but the case is heating up. It, the motions for summary judgment will be drafted, as well as potential trials sent out. So this was on the side of precaution, not gonna, not gonna tell you for one minute, Ms. Spray, that the actual spend will be that number. To the contrary, it should be less. But it just avoids us going back to the Board for additional authority.
I understand that concept. You just said that the last year the spend was a hundred and twenty-five?
No, no, the approval amount to spend was one-
Oh, the approval of mount was one twenty-five. Okay, all right, yeah, all right. Okay.
So it's just an error on the side of precaution. Should this case heat up, should the, should summary judgment not be viable? And if we get pushed out to a trial later um, within the school year, that we would be covered expense-wise.
Okay. I still want to go in that era of conservative and reduce it down to less than, less than ninety. I just think that's excessive from what you're saying. I, I don't know what the rest of the Board thinks, but-
You would have to make a motion-
To reduce it?
An amendment to this motion. Because we've already made the motion and seconded at ninety, so you would have to make an amendment.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the amount from ninety thousand to fifty thousand uh, on item number eleven point one, two, for the attorney for Rob Robinson Attorney for school, for our school year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, or twenty-two, twenty-four, I guess, or whatever that may be.
Yeah?
May I?
Yes, sir.
It'd be item number twelve for the school year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right. Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, Ms. Spray.
Do we have a motion to amend? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a second. So any discussion on this? Go ahead.
Because we don't know how this is going to be resolved, it makes more sense to allow the district this wider lead. We're talking about forty thousand dollars here, and we have much bigger items on this agenda than this forty thousand dollars, which did not get spent. Last year, we approved one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Obviously, the district takes the most conservative approach because we're looking at twenty-seven thousand last year. The year before that, the Board approved seventy-five thousand dollars. And obviously, once again, the district took a conservative approach because they only spent twenty-nine out of the seventy-five. So to hamstring the district when they're trying to settle something and get it done by lowering it doesn't make sense financially or business sense. Um, you know, I, what will happen is they're going to hit the fifty thousand dollars, and then they're going to come back before us. And that could be in the middle of something that they need to get done. And we're holding them back because, oh, we've hit the fifty, now we have to go back. We have to go get more money because we need to get this other thing done. It could be in the middle of something, for all we know. We don't know. So I, I understand and I appreciate wanting to take a conservative approach. I think there are a lot of ways that we can do that. I don't see this as one of them. I don't think this is a good business practice. Um, I don't even think pulling this was a good business practice. Um, at any point in the past two weeks, you could have had this conversation and pulled it a week ago, when this got published even, so that the Board wouldn't have been apprised of this. Um, and the staff, that I'm sure Mr. Tatum, I'm not sure when you were told that this was going to get pulled. When were you told this was going to get pulled?
I um, I was informed, ma'am, that it was going to be pulled today. But I was very familiar with my item already in the historical spend. It's in my wheelhouse.
Right, you're right. And this comes, and we're so fortunate that you're here to answer those questions because there's other items on this, on this agenda that those people don't know that these items got pulled. They may not work in this building. They could be somewhere else. And they wouldn't be able to answer those questions because they aren't here because the items got pulled today. So I'm grateful that you're here sitting with us and you can answer those questions because I don't know about these other ones, if that's really truly fair to those employees and the district that it happened the way that it's happened. Aside from that, I do not believe this is a good business decision. I believe that the district has shown that they make a conservative approach. I believe that if we do this, it could hamstring the district from finishing and completing things if they could finish and complete them truly, just by lowering that amount, which means they'll have to come back before us. That's it. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? I'm sorry, I don't have my Granicus up. Um, I have Mister Tatum. Let's speak.
So I, I agree with Ms. Messenger. I would just, I would just address myself to her real quick that a- as a tone of, a way of speaking, if one of us up here has a problem with one of these agenda items, even if it, if it makes you angry that Ms. Spray maybe pulls items and you don't think it's right or correct, or she should have done more, but she obviously does her homework in advance. Uh, I, I would just ask you, as a tone for the meeting, to not let that anger come flying out of you when we discuss these type of things. If you would like to politely talk to Ms. Spray or make a suggestion of how she could do this differently, but the, the expression of that anger flying out of you because one of us is trying to do our job up here, I don't think is conducive to the conduct of this meeting. So say, what you had to say was really good, but the anger and the vehemence with which you, with which you say it obviously directed towards Ms. Spray and what she's doing just doesn't seem, like I said, to be an appropriate way to conduct ourselves at the, at the bench, even though I agree with what you said. So I'll just give you that feedback.
Can I respond?
Sure.
So, um, I don't believe this is the job. I don't believe pulling things the day of is our job. I don't think that's doing your homework, and I don't think that's doing your due diligence. And that's where my frustration comes from, because I spent hours talking to the superintendent, getting any information I need before I walk into this room. That's my job. And if I have something that I have a question about, I dig it out way before the morning of. It's not fair to the employees. So I'm sorry if I come across as frustrated. I am frustrated. You said make suggestions politely. I have done that multiple times in meetings. Now we're to the point where I really think it's not fair to the employees because I'm so grateful Mister Tatum's here, but there's several other where they may not be, and there were things that we talked about at our last workshop. So that's where my frustration comes from, because it's, it's not doing your homework. That's not doing your due diligence. In fact, I think it makes this Board look bad. That's my frustration. So we're a team. We're supposed to work together. This is not a team when it's, I want to discuss it. You, you don't want to discuss it. You want to ask one question. It's not a discussion. There's not much discussion on this item. This is a regular business item that's come before us for years, and if you did your homework, you'd know. We approved it for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars last year and seventy-five thousand years before that. That's my point. That's not, that your due diligence and your homework comes way before sitting here and pulling things.
Well, there, sometimes there are thirty-five, forty, fifty items. And as you go through all of those, and, and you're review, you're reviewing during the week, you may look at a few and go, that, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about that. As you start to review maybe a couple of days prior, you might go, I still have some concerns about that one. I talked it over with the superintendent nine days ago, but I still have a concern about it. I want to bring it up. In light of the fact that the sunshine laws prohibit us from talking about these things, if, 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 in between the day that she has her briefing nine days before, and she's still looking at things, and she still says, you know, I still, I, I, I thought I had my questions answered, but now I don't. This is our only opportunity to discuss these things, and if she wants to discuss them, then out of a courtesy to all of us up here as a professionalism idea, why, I don't understand the anger that, that, and the frustration about that. I would just let it happen. If she pulled like twenty items or something, I could see that coming out. But again, we have these briefings nine days prior. Things change. Maybe she has future dis- more discussions after the, the superintendent's briefing, and, and she thinks about it the night before, and she says, I want to talk about it. And we can't do it unless we're sitting at this die because of the sunshine laws.
I think you're missing my point. My point is not that I got pulled. In fact, I was the one that supported the policy of allowing her to pull it, anytime any Board member to pull it, because I believe that's a sign of respect. If you truly have a question or a concern, you should bring it before the Board.
Right.
I support that one hundred percent, but I also think you should do it far in advance so that the district can respond to that, so that they can get you this information, so that she would even know a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was approved last year. Okay. That's more of my point. It's not fair to staff. That's more of my point.
Okay.
Not that it's not allowed. I think it should be allowed, and I think we should when it's genuinely something that needs to be discussed.
Well, let him, let him finish.
I'm, I'm, I've given her my feedback. Yeah, it's good dialogue. I've given her-
I do have Ms. Spray up on the, did you want to comment?
Well, I just-
I just don't have you on the speaker.
Okay, I, oh.
Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, no, I um, uh, no, I, I do not want to address the, the question of pulling things from the consent. We've had that discussion before. Um, but I just want to point out that within the foundation of this item, what you should be looking at is not the ninety thousand dollars. You should be looking at the hourly rate. That's where, um, that's where it impacts. You know, if the guy went from a hundred and seventy-five to three fifty, if you, he's going to use up that ninety thousand dollars a whole lot quicker. So, um, you know, I agree with the, the Ms. Messenger on that. It's good business to plan for and budget for what could happen. So I would not want the Bo-, uh, the district to have to come back and, uh, and ask us to increase the, uh, increase the, uh, the budget for that item.
Thank you. Ms. Spray?
Okay. Meetings ago, we had a conversation. I wanted to talk about a consent item. I didn't make a motion to pull. So I was like, shut down. So again, to Mister Tatum's point, I'm reviewing this stuff last night, and I'm not going to call on a Sunday night or a Monday night at midnight after I review this again um, and discuss these items over the phone. So I'm like, all right, I'll just wait till in the morning and do it then. And I sent an email this morning. So the staff would kind of know, I'm going to pull these four items just for discussion because the Board does not get to talk outside of this room. So I pull items so we, as a Board collectively, can have those discussions. I don't do that out of malice or to be combative. I do this out of, we have a specific timeline and timeframe that we can talk collectively. And that's why I pulled this, because I was, have on my notes, when I had my briefing, a mark of fifty thousand dollars with a question mark, and I think I did talk about that with Ms. Saunders. But I don't know that anyone else on the Board here said, hey, what's going on? Are we anticipating a, a greater amount of activity on this item? I kind of got that little bit of conversation there, and I do know it's a, a very long, drawn-out case. But I just, when I'm looking at the sheet that's given to me, that's what I'm going on. That's what we spent. Maybe there should be a summary on that sheet going forward. Approved amount from year to year and spent amount. I don't know. I didn't dig in that far. I will admit to that. I did not dig in that deep, and I did not look at the hourly rate because during my briefing, I don't have access to that stuff. I just have what I'm given during the briefing, which are printed materials, what the agenda items are going to be. I don't get to dig in deep to the documents until later. So anyway, I'll, I still want to stand with my motion to amend it. If I don't get the votes, that's, I'm, I'm fine with that too. But to berate me about pulling the consent items here is unprofessional, in my opinion, when I was berated for not wanting to pull it in a meeting before. So I'm following our guidelines, so we, as a- So, I'm following our guidelines so we, as a board collectively, can have open discussion because I can't talk to any of these people outside of this room. So, when I have a concern and I want to talk to the entire board, I'm going to pull a consent, and that's what I did with these, the items that I pulled, because I have, I wanted to have a discussion with the entire board. And that's just the way I feel about it, and I'll go on and let you do the vote.
Thank you. I don't have anybody else lit to speak. I, I would just say on the comment that I do believe best practice is to try to get pulled items in as soon as possible to make sure the staff is here. And I'm not saying you didn't do that in this case. Maybe you, again, and things change.
It's not necessary I need staff. It's necessary, maybe we just have the conversation between us.
Sure, but if we didn't, I, I don't, I agree with that. Sometimes it is between us, but there's going to be some things that we don't know because we're not privy to the, to the, to the small details of how an operation works because there's so many operations happening. So, we do need staff to help us and to inform us. So, but I'm not saying you did, and I agree with you. I'm not saying you did this maliciously at all. I, I don't believe that's in your nature. So, with that, we're ready to have our vote to, this is, this is, do we have, did you put that on there yet? No? We'll just do it. We'll do it manually. That's fine. So, we, we have a motion as second to amend the amount, approval amount to purchase legal services from $90,000 to $50,000. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
Right? We're good? Okay. All those in favor? Do you want us to put hands up again? Yeah?
Did we go, did we go down again here?
Yeah, um, yeah, we're just going to do it manually. So, all those in favor accepting that amendment, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, raise your hand, same sign, aye. So, that amendment does not carry. Four to one. Did you get who did not? Who, who voted no? Ms. Foreman, Ms. Messenger, Ms. Tatum, Ms. Cho. Okay. So, now we'll go move back to the original. We had a motion, we had a second for the approval to purchase and the continued legal services for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Are you able to put that up on granicus? Perfect.
Where are we at?
So, we had a motion by Ms. Messenger. We had a second by Ms. Foreman. If we could all put our votes in there for item number 11.12. And that passes four to one with Ms. Spray as a no. Moving on to item number 24. Superintendent Saunders.
Yes, I recommend the approval to purchase systematic instruction in Phenom Awareness Phonics Insight Words or SIPs Materials and Services. SDMC number 24-0030-BS, continued procurement with vendor estimated in the amount of $100,000. This item is part of our primary grades literacy instruction for small group. For, we use it a lot for tier two and tier three as well. It's just basic literacy development. So, that is what this item is.
I do have a motion to approve item number 24.
You do, or you're asking for one? So, moved?
Uh, yeah, do we have one?
Oh, okay. Sorry, I thought you said I do.
Nope, I'm sorry. So, we got to move from Ms. Messenger. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mrs. Foreman. And do we have comment? Ms. Spray, go ahead.
I just had simple questions on this one. Historical expenditures, again, 14286, and then this year dropped down to around $70,000. So, this is kind of, did we reduce the schools that we put that in or, or what did we change on it? I know I had this conversation, but I was looking at that online as well to see where it's actually at and why it dropped, or, yeah, why the drop from 21 to 22.
Yes, ma'am. Earlier, where you had the large expense, the 286, was our entire district. We started with just certain schools in the first year. Then the second was a full implementation. After we bought all the materials, we don't have to replace all the materials each year.
This is an upgrade, update?
This is continuing the supplemental product that you need for, in some cases, new students, new additional teachers. You, you do have some wear and tear and some lost materials. So, this is just the continuation and the software continuation as well. So, but most of these are individual sight words and things like that. So, once you've done the initial purchase, it's not the same expenditure to continue it.
Okay. And I guess I probably should have called Ms. Presley, but do you think that we're getting good results from that program?
Well, I, I do think that whether we use this or something similar, we have to give supplemental materials for the basic sight word, for literacy development of instruction. That's what this product does. We started using it in, in the COVID years. So, I do think that it is doing the job of what we've purchased it for. Again, it's not our core reading material. It is a supplemental resource.
Okay. That's all I had. I just, like I said, again, having conversations here with the rest of the board and understanding some of this sometimes. I need a further reminder. And I don't know if anybody else on the board has any questions about this program, but I, I did.
Right now, anybody else got anything?
I'd like to make a comment about that. The discussion among the board and the sunshine, you're not going to get answers to your questions from other board members. Just, you know.
I can get opinions.
But without the facts.
But if they did their, if they did their research, they might have researched something different than I did.
I would like to point out, we all do our homework.
Oh, I understand. I'm not, I'm not saying.
Writing on that, you know.
Like.
We all do our homework. That is part of our job.
Right.
I wouldn't want to have this discussion that we're having right now with you one-on-one or behind the scenes, you know.
Right.
So, it, that's, sunshine law has a lot of benefits, and we can have this discussion with all five of us. I don't want you going, feeling like you can go to Ms. Cho and have that, that discussion if, if we didn't have sunshine. I think the board needs to discuss it together.
That's why I pulled it from consent.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm talking about a different point. I'm not criticizing taking it from consent. I'm just saying this isn't a sunshine issue. This is a preparation for the meeting issue. That's all.
Oh, no, no.
So, any, any other comments on this? Nope. We have a motion. We have a second. Can we vote on granicus? Yep. So, please put in your votes for the approval to purchase systematic instruction SIPs for this school year in the amount of 100,000. It passes five to zero. Moving on to item number 25. Superintendent Saunders.
Yes, I recommend the approval to purchase Lexia Learning Systems, SDMC number 24-0028-BS, continued procurement with vendor estimated in the amount of $250,000. This product for this year, the reason of the increase, part of that was in the reading workshop conversation. We are removing iReady, and we're adding this product now not only to tier two and tier three for secondary, but it will be our tier two and tier three intervention for elementary as well. So, that is what this product is. Takes the place of iReady.
Thank you.
So, moved.
We have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion as second on the floor, so we are now open for discussion. Ms. Spray?
And that's, again, I wanted the public to know that I have had numerous people say that iReady was not a good program. Did we talk in length about that at the workshop? Couldn't remember. I took, looked at my workshop notes, and I couldn't see that. But I want the public to know that this will replace iReady because there wasn't a lot of positive feedback from people that have used that program. Some teachers love it, some teachers don't. So, I think this is a good thing. I just wanted to have the discussion again. I mean, a lot of these things go through the consent, and the public think that, oh, they're disapproving, but I do want them to know, and I'm not going to get criticism from people, oh, you shouldn't bring it up at the dais, but I just want people to know that this will be an improvement over the iReady program, and I do support it. I just feel like pulling some of these things so we can have discussion among the board members. I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but that was mine.
Uh, no other discussion. We will move to vote on this item. Sorry, I got a, oh, I just went out of, I'm a, I'm a yes. I just clicked out on, clicked out of it instead of clicking what I was. So, that's a five, five to zero vote to approve item number 25. Moving to item number 32. Superintendent Saunders.
Yes, I recommend the approval of the appointments, change of assignments, promotions, reappointments, reassignments, resignations, retirement, suspensions, terminations, and transfers. And.
So, moved.
Can she really make that recommendation of her names on it?
I think I can.
So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. So, now we can discuss this item. Ms. Spray?
Okay. Ms. Saunders' name is on this item for her retirement. But I also wanted to point out that we have, we're losing 28 teachers, but we're gaining, as was indicated on the good news moment. We're losing 13 teachers, eight if I did my math right. But we also, I wanted to point out that we have 11 people with 20-plus years or more who are retiring. I want to say congratulations to them, and then a special congratulations to those who have 30-plus years and are retiring. And that range goes from bus drivers to teachers to other areas of our district. And that's the reason I pulled this item because I wanted to at least give the recognition and not just consent their item as in a consent because I wanted to thank them for their years of service to the district. I'm sure we're going to miss you, and even Manatee Technical, we have a director leaving. So, I just wanted to say thank all of them for their service and good luck in their future endeavors, and that's why I pulled the item.
Great. I will ditto that. Any other comments from there? I don't see anybody lit up. So, go ahead. We can go ahead and vote on item number 32, approval of the appointments, change of assignments, promotions, reappointments, reassignments, suspension, terminations, and transfers at approves five, it passes five to zero. That concludes the consent items that were pulled. So, we'll move to new business, item number 15, non-consent items. It's number one, approval to apply for a student with unique abilities, SUA program for Manatee Technical College with Florida Post-Secondary Comprehensive Transitions Program, or FPCTP. No financial impact. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
You have to make a recommendation? I thought it said non-consent, so you don't need to.
But it's new business.
Okay, so let's hear the recommendation. Sorry, Ms. Foreman. Your recommendation from the superintendent first.
I recommend the approval to apply for students with unique abilities program for Manatee Technical College with a Florida Post-Secondary Comprehensive Transitions Program. There is no financial impact.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Superintendent, can you just, for the public's knowledge, just explain what that is?
Yes, I, I do have Paul Ganssper that I'll bring up, but this is going to be working with our students with disabilities to help them be placed with some job opportunities and job skills. But I'll let Mr. Ganssper talk a little bit more about it.
Thank you. Chairman, school board, superintendent, staff, have a chance to be able to bring to you a, a new program. Typically, when we do new, new programs at MTC, we don't necessarily bring it to the board. It's all based on the needs of the community and the workforce. This program's a little bit different, though, because it is through a different agency through the state, and you saw it on here, FPCTP, so it's spelled out for you. And what they do is they say, if you want to do this program, when you apply, we need for you to have it go through the school board so the school board knows of it, so that the, the community knows, and of course, support from superintendent and from the district. So, I'll give you a quick little overview with it. I had been in a previous district where we had a program, and it was called with students with disabilities. So, there were adult students with disabilities. As time goes on, it changes with the name. So, now the name has changed to students with unique abilities. So, that's, that's a change that we'll look at as we move forward. This is a post-secondary program that is for students who have a GED or high school diploma, and they can go to MTC to do two stages. This plan is the first stage, they get to work on things that they need to do for their, their personal view as far as finances, a, a chance to get different skills for working. They also get a chance to go through MTC both campuses and, and, and get a little test of each of the programs that are there. With that, we also give them the opportunity to be able to get skills for maybe even being like a custodian or being something with food services, and it's for students who have a higher level of intellectual disabilities, so they're higher functioning. The purpose is to give them an opportunity to experience MTC and all the programs because the second stage is that they would be able to go into one of those programs at MTC to even get more skills to go into the workforce. The purpose of the program is to give support to the students through a coordinator, through a teacher, through a paraprofessional over a three-year span to help those students be able to get the skills that they need to go into the workforce. We train them how to do interview, how to dress for the interview, how to shake hands. It's a lot of different things that go with that, the program. I've, I've spoken with Nikki Cox, who's our director of the ESE department, and she has looked forward to this coming up. One of the questions is why now? Why haven't we haven't it done before? The state does have a law that has a grant that's attached to it, so the grant funds will be able to help this program. So, at the next school board meeting, we'll be presenting approval to apply and accept to expend a grant to be able to support this program. And helping me with the program has also been Don Giddens, who's with me right here, and she's with the Fiddler's Program in our district to be able to help other teachers with ESE as well. So, I'm available to answer any questions you have at this time if you wish, but that's a, a quick overview of the program.
Sounds great. Any board members, any question? I don't see anybody lit up. Yep. I'm sorry, Ms. Spray?
What kind of trades will these, will this program gear towards with special needs? I'm saying, because I have a special needs grandson. So, what kind of program will this, or field, I guess, would you say that you would focus this on?
Will the programs be open to all the programs at MTC, but it's going to be geared toward each of the students, what their interest is and what level they're able to achieve at. So, so it would be any of the programs that we have offered for them to be able to go into.
Okay. Because some students may not have the College Act Union, but they have the physical abilities to do things. They just need to be taught some of these things. Is that part of this program?
That's, that's, that's our, our first stage is to identify and help the students and to help them with career exploration. And in that first stage, we'll be able to help them figure out what's best for them at their level and what their needs are. So, it could be after that first stage, they just go straight into the workforce with the skills that they learned and not necessarily going to MTC or doing any of those programs. But that's an option. It's, it's all based on the needs of the student and the interests of the students.
Okay. I just want to expand. A program that I'm familiar with, not here, but from my home state, had a similar, you know, out of school or out even in high school. They went to a little, small manufacturing plant, and they did the same thing, same job, day after day after day after day, and they were just thrilled to even have that opportunity. So, it's repetitive. It's doing the same thing all the time. It's something that gave them that pride that they had that job, and it also served that little, small business who helped the community by hiring these people that may not be able to go into the general population workforce, but this was a very good fit for them. So, I don't know if this is part of that program, but maybe look at that. So I don't know if this is part of that program, but maybe look at that.
It'll be part of the program, because we'll be reaching out to the industry partners.
Oh, wonderful.
Find out what their needs are. Uh, and part of the program is also doing field trips for the students to be able to go out to businesses to see what kind of jobs are out there. Uh, and, and I hear you loudly when you say the repetitiveness of, uh, the job helps some of the students be more successful, and we're aware of that, too, and we're gonna look for that as we reach out to different partners.
Okay, perfect.
And, and we do have, just because my brother is Down Syndrome, uh, we do have partners, Easter Seals, that help place individuals, not necessarily going through MTC, learning a trade, learning that concept, but definitely partner with outside entities, um, Goodwill is a big partner.
Right.
Um, and, and go to one on Cortez, and you'll be greeted by my brother whenever he works. Um, I'll go, he calls it his store, it's not his store, he owns zero of it. Um, but, but we do have some of those programs like that, just, um, you know, Easter Seals is a, is a, not a charter school, excuse me, but a, um, uh.
Partner.
Partner school. Um, and so, uh, you know, they, they do have programs where they're doing that.
Right.
Yeah.
And we'll be reaching out to all of the partners that do that as well, uh, because we're not here to be in competition, but to be in partnership with.
Yeah. Ms. Foreman, was that up?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Uh, when is the program gonna be starting up?
Um, the way it works, the way it's set up is that we get this, uh, this approval, we send it off to the state, it takes them a while to look at it, review the plan, send it back if we have to do any adjustments. Uh, anytime we do a new program at the technical college, it also go, has to go through the accreditation agency, which they have to look at it and they have to approve it. So obviously, by me telling you that, I can see you all kind of, kind of going, oh, it looks like it's gonna take a while. So it's, it's almost a year of planning, uh, of doing the paperwork, working with the partners, uh, recruiting the students, going through that whole thing. So we're looking to have the students be able to start, uh, not this coming August, but it would be the following August. That way, everything's set up ready and go. I know it seems like it's off in the distance, but sometimes we have to build a foundation a little bit slower to make sure that it's a, a solid foundation that will last for many years.
Will there be a limit on the number of students that we can accommodate?
Uh, typically, when you have your ESE students, it's gonna be a smaller group. Uh, so we've worked with the state and we talked about two stages, the first stage will be ten students. Uh, and then as some of those students go on to the second stage, we'll have a new stage come in. So it'll be up to twenty students, that'll be in stage one and stage two. Uh, if we find that we need, if we can increase it to fifteen students, because that's appropriate for the students and what we need to, we can address that, and we can always send an amendment to the state to be able to have the plan changed.
And how will we communicate this to the public? Because I, I anticipate that there's gonna be a large demand for it.
Right, right. Uh, and, and that's the thing, too, is it's, it's great to have a large demand, and then we might have a waiting list and things like that, too. But, uh, part of that year of setting up would be putting together, uh, different, uh, marketing ideas and different paperwork that we can give out, uh, working with the district, working with how we can roll it out to the, uh, the community, as well as working with the other partners, that they could be able to talk to the parents. Uh, I, too, have a son who has Asperger, so, uh, I know it's a very, I don't want to say a small community, but it's a very active community, so typically, once one or two knows, then it really does spread to everyone else. So we're excited about it to be able to help our community. Uh, there are other ones like this around the state, and Don can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the closest one right now is in Fort Myers. Uh, we, uh, there is another one that's, uh, across the bridge over in St. Petersburg, and the idea would be that we would partner with them, too. Uh, the one that's in St. Petersburg, I think, is with St. Pete College. So if the students go through our stage one, they could actually go off to St. Pete College. Uh, I've already reached out to, uh, State College of Florida, uh, and they said they're interested, too. So I, I can see a lot of people wanting to partner with us to be able to help these students out.
And I would also suggest that we look at the district's needs in terms of, as an employer, um.
Yeah, what do we need?
Janitorial, um, or custodial, cafeteria, you know, there's, there's.
Well, part of our job shadowing would be hopefully working in the district, and that would give them a chance to also get a chance to work with, uh, the different entities that might say, hey, why don't you come work over here, too? So that, that's, that's part of the plan as well, so.
Yeah, that's, this is wonderful. I wish we could multiply it ten times, you know, make it much bigger, so.
Yeah, I do feel like there will be a need for this, for sure.
Definitely, definitely.
We thank you for your support, thank you.
Spencer was also lit.
Oh, yeah, um, well, Mrs. Foreman actually just asked a question I was gonna ask. I saw that in your application, it said ten students, and I just wanted to know if you thought it would increase over the years. It sounds like there's a possibility that it will. Um, so that was really my only question, so I think this sounds great. Everything I read about it sounded really like it's gonna be a great thing, so thank you for bringing it here.
Great, thank you.
That's it? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a, um, oh, no, we never did a motion, did we? We have not motioned, yeah. Okay? We did have a motion? Oh, Ms. Foreman.
Oh, did she?
That's right, and then Ms. Bray wants a second.
I'll second, yeah.
So we've got a motion, a second, let's go ahead and vote, uh, to approve item number fifteen point one. That passes five to zero. Uh, item number fif, or excuse me, item number two, um, Superintendent Saunders.
Yes, I recommend the approval of the budget amendments for March twenty-twenty-three.
So moved. I'll second.
So we have motion, a second, and Ms. Sellers, yeah, if you want to come up and give us a summary of those amendments, thank you.
Chair and board members, all right, for the month of March, we had six hundred and eight budget amendments, and two thousand three hundred sixty, uh, chart strings were affected. Twenty-three of those, um, affected over a million dollars. In the general fund, there were two. Uh, this was due to activity reflected mainly from higher interest earned on the TAN borrowing, that's the tax anticipation note, uh, partially offset by the higher, uh, interest expenses, expenditures. In the, uh, debt service fund, there were two chart screens, strings, and this was due to activity, related to timing of the COPS interest, uh, payments delayed until next year. And then in the, um, capital fund, there were eighteen chart screen tree, ugh, uh, eighteen chart strings, and this is, uh, mostly the significant activity also around the increase in the COPS. And, uh, in the special revenue fund, we had one chart string and added new S R three grant. Um, this was for the ARP, the American Recovery Grant Program, and it is a one point one million. This was the after-school reading program, the intensive after-school reading.
Uh, thank you. We, yes, Ms. Foreman, is that to speak?
Um, I noticed in there that, uh, when you said the anticipation, anticipation of the increase in the COPS, um, that it does show the twenty-seven million dollars for Pomisola Elementary.
Yes, twenty, uh, yes, so that was the, um, Pomisola, the thirty million, uh, partially offset, um, by the one million to get to twenty-nine million. Uh, there was also the funding for that COPS, that was the twenty-three million, uh, sorry, forty-three million. Um, the addition of the Hale Middle School, um, that was five point nine million. And then we had various things related to, uh, Manatee High School and Bay Shore High School painting and roofing, two million approximately each. Um, and also the Blackburn, um, Elementary School renovation for the COPS, close to three million.
Why is it happening in this time period? Because obviously, we're not spending twenty-seven million dollars on a elementary school before, between now and June thirtieth.
No, this is, well, so this is part of, um, part of the year end and getting ready to put all of the, um, uh, the budget and the correct, uh, projects going forward, so it's, um, it's moving it around inside of the capital projects, uh, to get ready for, um, when we, once we do have that closing, that will be on March twenty, May twenty-fifth. Uh, so that's why we have that different activity, it's just a basically cleanup work going on right now before year end, related to the COPS.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Foreman. Mr. Tatum, is that to speak next?
Yes, please. I don't know, there's gone the frog, he jumped out and went away. All right, there we go. So earlier in the meeting, if you go back to, to the expenditure report that we had, it said, uh, expenses exceeded revenues healthcare insurance fund by four point five million for the month of March, resulting in ending balance. And then I noticed that we have a balance of four point five million. I just want to make sure that we're, if you could just give us an update on that real quick, how the healthcare fund balance is working out. And I know there's some things we can't talk about as far as negotiations and stuff, but.
Well, right now, we're in that sweet spot where we have still staff working, where we have our deductions, um, coming out of everyone's salaries to go towards, uh, the, um, uh, payments. What's gonna happen is in, uh, by June, July, when it's the summer, and you have some of those, um, ten-month people not working, uh, that's when, we, and we will still have the claims that we have to pay still throughout the rest of the months. As we slightly build up, um, we will end up chewing away at a little bit that extra that we do have at this point. We, there are some, um, other larger claims that we can see coming that haven't been able to close yet as well, too. But that's the, partially the reason why we'll see the climb come up at this point, just because we still have everybody working right now, um, where their, um, premiums are, their deductions are, are contributing to the revenue right now to climb that just a little bit.
And remember, Mr. Tatum, we have money already put aside in our general fund that, when needed, each month, we will transfer into the health insurance fund if need be. So we've set aside money, uh, per our shade meeting or executive session meeting that will go into there until we get to renegotiating next year's health insurance. So we're, we're in good shape right now. We're not gonna transfer the money in there until we need to, if we need to. Because we're still, remember those, those claims are three, three months in the rears.
Right.
So we're not gonna dump additional revenue in there until we see we need to, but, but you have nine million dollars set aside for that purpose.
Okay, thank you for that reminder. I appreciate it. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. If you two could remove your names from the speaker box. Thank you. Uh, nobody else is lit to speak, so thank you very much, Ms. Sellers. So we have a motion, um, or could we, yep?
Yes, I made the motion.
Yeah.
And I seconded.
Okay.
We have a motion, we have a second, um, and any other discussion from board? Nope? So go ahead and vote on the approval of the budget amendments for March twenty-twenty-three. Passes five to zero. Um, moving on to item number sixteen, workshops, we haven't changed anything, I, um, I'm actually a culprit. I haven't put in my, um.
Priority list.
My priority list, so we haven't changed any of that from last time we saw it. We obviously have the next couple of months set up, new superintendent searches and, uh, and the, the budget coming up. Um, so once we tally up all the, the priorities of the, the ones we've got there, we will, um.
Share it.
Update that, share it out, send it. Um, any discussion on workshops? No? Number, we don't have any other public comment, uh, item number seventeen, so we've tied number eighteen updates. Legal Department update, Mr. Die.
Nothing.
That's a good thing.
Turn over my time.
That's a good thing. Thanks. Um, operations update, Ms. Wagner.
Very good, good morning. Morning, Chair Choak, members of the board, superintendent. Very good, I have four items today. Uh, number one, uh, Leadership Manatee. So I'm just giving a plug to our chamber, so Leadership Manatee is, uh, the deadline's coming up for May fifteenth. Uh, if you've not participated, just want to push it out there, it's a great program to help learn about Manatee County, and you go through with a cohort of other leaders from our, uh, community, and it's a, it's a commitment. It's, uh, fifteen days really out of your schedule, but it's, uh, it really is beneficial to learn about the community. So I'm just putting that out there. Number two, uh, we have, uh, May sixteenth is our next job fair. That's gonna be for teachers and parents, it's gonna be at the Wakeland Support Center from, uh, two to five, so it'll be in late in the afternoon, we've had good responses when they're late also, so we'll see what happens, uh, next week. Number three, Project Digitize, so that's exciting. If you recall, we've spoke about it before, that's where we're digitizing all the active student and employee records. So, uh, that's just finished up. Mr. Hanson and his team have worked really hard with the schools, and the school personnel have worked very hard also to make sure we're moving into the electronic world, and we have all our active student and employee records now digitized. So that's actually, uh, they did it in fourteen months, and it's about three years ahead of schedule. So they really worked hard to, to knock it out of the park, so congratulations. And number four, we spoke at the last board meeting, wanted to give a short update about our VEX world competition. If you remember, we had four schools who went to Texas to participate. Uh, so here's some interesting information, there were eight hundred teams, eight hundred teams from thirty countries around the world who went to Texas to compete. So the way they set it up is that they have, um, eight different playfields set up, uh, where you compete, uh, one-on-one against other, uh, groups. And at the end of the, the competition, they go through, and any teams that are at twenty or above, so you finish twentieth place or above, you move on to the next level, to the final world competition. So how did our schools do? So we had thirteen teams go from Manatee County, from four different schools, and we had teams placed in the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, uh, and then the rest of them were between thirty-one and sixty-nine. So we were so close to making it on to the next level, uh, and all the students, of course, who went, came back saying, ah, I can't wait till next year, I'm gonna do this different and do that different, and so it's great to have Manatee County represented it so well, and.
What grade levels?
So these were middle, these were elementary school. These were elementary schools, uh, that went, and it was, um, McNeil, Mills, Willis, and Witt. So those four schools went with thirteen teams, so we had, uh, forty-six students. It's a big deal, I mean, to finish that close, close to the twenty, and that just would get you to the next level, so who knows what will happen next year, but we're gonna be right there, so.
Um, I have a quick question on, uh, we obviously, um, have graduations coming up next week.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of people will be going to those. Um, is there a chance, and maybe you've already, maybe you already thought about this, that we put a booth there for job, for job fair there, because you're gonna have thousands of people, you know, coming through. Um, it may just be a, a good thing to have it there, that as people are walking, and maybe they're feeling great about their kid walking across or whatever, like, hey, I can, I'm a, you know, whatever.
No, that's a great idea, it's great, there's lots of students, absolutely, it's a great idea. We will make that happen, and every student had ten tickets to go, so there could be, you know, thousands and thousands of people there to see our, our table ready to go.
Yeah.
Yep.
Awesome, and then, uh, Mr. Tatum was lit as well.
Good morning, Mr. Wagner.
Good morning.
So a constituent brought up a concern that sometimes we have job fairs at maybe high schools and that, that the school system doesn't have anybody there for jobs for the schools. I, I just wanted to, to address that concern, if that's happening, or if it's not happening, or why that concern is coming up, or it's just, I, I'm surprised, I doubt that, I doubt that that's happening, but I'm just curious.
Right, I'm not aware of that happening, we do have, uh, all of our job fairs, we participate in. I mean, they're our job fairs, we.
Right.
Schedule them, we have our teams there, we have our tables. Uh, besides that, we go on, and when there's community job fairs, we participate in those as well. Career Source Suncoast does a lot of job fairs. The Great Florida Teach-In wasn't ours, but we went in Orlando and had a booth there. So when there's job fairs, we will be at the job fair, our human resources department is there with tables. Uh, the, the high schools do not have their own job fairs, uh, they have, uh, maybe a college and career fair where you would have, uh, people from the industry come and talk about, uh, working at their industry areas, and that might be what they're considering about, that, that might be what they're talking about.
Maybe that's it.
So, but we have, uh, anything that's an official job fair where people are being recruited, we are there, and we're partners with, uh, with outside agencies as well.
Okay, well, thank you for addressing that, because I just found it implausible that if there were a job for going on at the high school, that we wouldn't have somebody there, and maybe that's what the, what the issue is, is that these job fairs are happening and people, they're not job fairs, they're career fairs. But would it be a good idea to send someone?
Absolutely.
To these career fairs from the school system?
We can do that to make sure that we are, but we have, uh, like, for instance, Manatee, uh, Technical College goes to all of those high school, uh, career fairs also, because our job is to get them thinking about what they're doing after high school as well. So we would have, you know, five or six tables that you'll see at those.
Okay, well, thank you for addressing that issue, and if one constituent had the question, maybe the other ones did, and that way it gets out to the public in a public forum, so thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Bray?
I got a question for you. Out at the fairgrounds, in the Veterans Building, Veterans Hall, I think it's called, on the north end, the northwest corner is the county. north end, the northwest corner is the county commission booth. Is it possible that we could do a area for the school board? People have asked me, well, why is the school board not out there? I don't know if they charge for that, but I'm sure we could partner with the county, the commissioners, to say, hey, let's have this for our school district. And I don't know if we've ever had a booth out there for careers, but that would be a great opportunity, I think, because there's several events out there all the time, and they go through that building all the time. And I've seen staff at the county commission booth. I think that the school district needs to have a presence out there. It's just, you know, booth or something. Somebody brought that to my attention several times, and I keep forgetting to bring that up. So I don't know if somebody can look at that, but I would certainly be in favor of having that northeast corner for the school district. That way, we would have a permanent place all the time when people come through for different events. Not that we have to staff it or anything like that, but we could have things there, our good news flyers, our job listings, something that would encourage people to explore a career with the district.
That's a great idea. So and I can speak to that a little bit in the, when I first started here 22 years ago, that building was not there. They had metal buildings that were very cold when you'd have the fair. But we always had a career and technical education booth, and our teachers and and staff would staff it and try to get people, the parents and the community to know, hey, we're here. We have great programs for career and technical education. So we did do that at the beginning, but I I do hear what you're saying about a permanent booth. And so, yep, if that's something that's, we will definitely look into that and see what that what the cost is and what that would take to make happen. So it's about awareness. It's about letting people know we're here.
Right.
We have lots of careers, and we have great programs also.
Right. Okay.
One more, Ms. Foreman.
Yeah, I think some great ideas here, you know, to get creative on getting the job out, job information out. I would also suggest that if we're setting up booths and tables, that we offer information on volunteering in the schools, you know, that come read to the kids, you know. So.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea. You could have, you know, we got flyers there that people, if they're not staffed, people could walk by, volunteer, learn about careers, learn about our programs, learn about upcoming events, so we could even make it where it's just even static if there's not somebody in there. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Instructional update, Superintendent Saunders.
Yes, most of you are aware that today is Official Teacher Appreciation Day. As we know, they are the backbone of our institution, and we certainly could not run our organization without our teachers. So we are much appreciative of all their dedication, their hard work, their commitment to our students. We tend to celebrate them all week, but really, and as we we really celebrate them each and every day, but today is the day they're recognized. So I wanted to make sure, if you didn't know, thank a teacher. They are the backbone of our organization. Superintendent updates, I would like to also remind everyone of our newly appointed principals that will be taking place July 1. We have Dr. Melinda Lundey, who will now be the principal of Bay Shore Elementary, Adrian Voss, who will be the principal of Blackburn Elementary. You probably remember her name. She was our Assistant Principal of the Year from Johnson. Also, Dr. Melissa McCullough will be the principal of Daughtry, and Melissa Porco will be the principal at Canaan Elementary. We also made a couple of changes in new appointments in middle school. We have no changes in high school this year, but Irene Nikotopoulos will be the new principal of Hell Middle School, and Lori Starkweather took over at SUG once Aunt McDonald retired this year. We also have Kate Barlog going to Dr. Mona Jane. So those are the administrative changes, and it was already referenced earlier, but high school graduations are upon us. So if you have not already calendared this, Bay Shore High School will be the first one on May 17th at 4:00 p.m., and then Lakewood Ranch High School follows the same day at 7:30. Southeast High School is May 18th at 4:00. May 18th at 7:30 is Palmetto High School. Then we have Parish Community on May 19th at 4:00, Manatee High at 7:30 p.m. And lastly, but not least, is Braden River High School, May 20th at 8:00 a.m. So we do have rain delay plans. We know that once we get into the spring, fingers crossed, we're not going to need that, but they are booked that way to have contingency for rain options since they are all outside graduations at Lee Com Park. So just make, wanted to make sure that everyone had that booked, and we're winding down. State assessments are occurring. We completed the majority of our reading assessments. The scores were immediate. Parents can already see their child's performance. So I will say that about the state assessment this time. There's not a major delay in the outcomes. We have begun the math taste testing now, and then we'll do the EOC starting next week and thereafter. So busy time, but also a very joyous, rewarding time. Thank you.
Thank you. For our board comments, I had this order, Foreman, Messenger, Tatum, Spray, myself. So Ms. Foreman.
Thank you.
Leadoff.
Yes, the fast is fast, isn't it?
It is fast.
It is. And it's pretty exciting.
It's incredible.
Thank you. Thank you. Actually, I didn't come up with that. One of the principals did. But, okay, I want to talk about the superintendent search. You know, tomorrow, we'll be interviewing for the public, in case they have, don't know, we'll be interviewing the three finalists. And I think so far, it's, we've been, we've had a really good process, and I thank the FSBA for that, because I know that they had to rein, at least rein me in a couple times. So, but they are, they are keeping us on task, and they they brought some qualified candidates. And I think the board members, because I, by virtue of the fact that we are pretty much consistent in our selections, I think we are demonstrating that our common goal is for the good of the kids. And I have no doubt we'll continue that process, continue that with the process in mind. Public, tomorrow, when we're doing the interviews, okay, they're going to be, the questions are going to be specific to the strategic plan. And I know that there are people that want some answers to some tough questions, pointed questions. I can assure you, they will be asked, but they will be asked on Thursday, when the board does their individual one-on-one. So so you're not going to see that tomorrow. And in regard to some of the tough questions, I want to point out that I spent seven years on the audit committee, which included the years 2013 to 20, before I came on the board. And so I've got experience and knowledge into what has gone on, and I can confirm that some of the statements made in the press are only part of the story, they're half-truths, and what is going on, you know, in regards to that publication is, it's not correct, you know. And if anybody wants the full story, I'd be happy to to fill them in. And I also want to say, I will not disqualify an applicant based on half-truths and/or affiliation with a prior superintendent. It's just not right. And that said, I look forward to talking with three honorable, qualified candidates tomorrow. And as far as community input, it is a very important part of this discussion, and I will, I encourage you, the public, to to weigh in on this. There will be a barcode at the meet and greet that QR code, sorry. I'm, yeah. We're going to stick a barcode on every applicant. But, yeah, no, a QR code that that will give you access to to providing some input, and it's very important. If you're not able to make the meet and greet, you know, the interviews are on video, are going to be live streamed. You can see the the answers to video questions, and so there's enough information, I think, that that you may form an opinion, and I encourage you to to use the the QR codes. And one, I I have received a question from people on what we're doing, you know, I mean, do we choose, are we required to pick one of the three? And I just want to, you know, to say, you know, remind everyone, the answer is no. You know, we're the board, and it is our responsibility to select a strong leader and communicator that our staff and community can enthusiastically support. That is our mission, and we all take it very seriously, and we want what's best for the district, so.
Thank you. Ms. Messenger.
She said a lot of, but I would, she said it better than I would have ever said it, so.
I wrote it down.
Don't say that. Now it's a public record. But I really agree with everything you just said, you know, and I agree with you that the fact that we all scored so similarly shows that focus, so I really do appreciate that, because these are my kids in our school, you know what I mean? So for me, this decision is is personal, you know, this, that, whoever we pick, that's going to have repercussions for my own children. So I really appreciate everything you just said there. Aside from that, you know, I just wanted to hit her on the fact that, you know, we had our groundbreaking last week out in a pasture. My car would not have made it there. But for the gun range and the driving pad, and and what I really appreciate about this, and and our chair really highlighted it at the at the groundbreaking, was that is such a great collaboration between the school district, between the city of Bradenton, between the Bradenton Police Department. So it just, it was just a really nice collaboration. And it's really exciting to see that it's going to help not just our schools, but it's going to help support law enforcement. So that was really exciting. I was really excited about that. Not so much the drive out there, but the, but being there was good. Other than that, like, you're right, we're just going to be crazy busy for the next couple of weeks, not just this week, but then next week, we're going to hopefully be able to pick somebody and agree. And then we got graduations. So it's like a really great time of year to, but we got this, all this other stuff to get through before we can get to that exciting part of graduation. So I'm, I'm, I am hopeful that, and confident, actually, I think I'm pretty confident that we're going to have a decision that is on behalf of the community but for the students. So I look forward to that, and I look forward to tomorrow and and the questions and everything else that we're going to go through the next couple of days. So that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Tatum.
Okay. So I suppose we need to address the superintendent thing. Everybody's doing that, and I'll throw in my two cents. I would just encourage everybody to remember that if you're interested, tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is it at 6:00 or 6?
6:00 to 7:30.
6:00 to 7:30 at the Urban Loft at Manatee Central, 515 Ninth Street, East Bradenton. You can come and meet and greet the three candidates and shake their hands and look them in the eye and do whatever else you'd want to do, and like you said, give us some feedback with the QR code. So that's, that's important. And I would just like, at this point, too, I just want to make sure that I'm current on where we have to be and what's going on tomorrow, so that I'm at the right place at the right time. So we need to be here tomorrow morning at 9:00 in the, is it happening in this room?
Yes.
Okay. And so we are interviewing the three candidates, right? And then as board members, other than potentially going to this dinner, which will, or the community meet and greet, which we'll talk about in a second, we don't have any other obligations during the day other than these three interviews. Okay? And I don't, I don't, I haven't seen an updated schedule, was, because this was done, this one from last week with four candidates, and now we only have three.
Laura, I didn't know that.
Was there one updated? Okay, I was out of town for the week, so.
So on your email, she said your individual times for Thursday?
Okay, great.
Who you're going to be interviewing, what time, and, yep.
I figured she was ahead of the game. I was just, I'm a little behind, but that's, I'm catching up, so.
No worries.
Okay. So then, we did talk about having some shifts tomorrow at this community event, so that those of us who wanted to go and watch could do that. I just wanted to finalize that to make sure that we abide by the sunshine laws. So what did we decide we were going to do there, just as a reminder? Are you taking the first?
I thought, I thought, I'm the last. She's the, I thought I was going to be first.
So you're 6:00 to 6:30. Then I'm going to do 6:30 to 7:00, and you're going to do 7:00 to 7:30. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that's all good.
That's what I have on my calendar, anyway.
Okay, great. I'm just.
But I don't believe that there's any, I mean, I guess, Mr. Die, you can start to interrupt, but I don't believe there's any sunshine violations, or all three there at the same time happened, or two happened to be there because one's walking in, I mean, as long as they're not discussing any potential things about the candidate, because obviously that's going to be voted on, or any other voting items, there's no sunshine violation there, correct?
No.
Not instantaneously, just because they walk into the same room.
Right. Right. Okay. I mean, obviously, there's public perception, which I'm sure is what you're more referring to, so.
But the reason we came up with that is because, my recollection, that the advice from you was that we not be in that room at the same time.
Correct. That was from the Attorney General's office.
So that, that's why we set up the schedule, so that we're not in that room at the same time. It's kind of like, I just think we should have a baton, actually, and so you can handle that way. I'm running out, and you're running in, and.
And that's my point, is I don't think we need, but that's, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
But if you walk in and.
Sure.
Your Ms. Foreman walks in, you're in there still, you're just not, you got to, like, run.
A minute or two, but that's why we did this. Okay. Was there anything else? And just so people know, too, there, there is no preordained person, candidate, or anything like that going on, just so that people know that. I just, I get some of those comments sometime, and and, you know, we do have an internal candidate, obviously, but it would be very dishonest of us to have spent all this money and gone through this process, kind of knowing in the back of our minds, ah, we're going to pick the internal candidate anyway. So people have expressed those concerns, and, you know, there, I don't think any of us have made up our minds, I can't speak for other people, but I know I haven't, and the process is going forward, and it's all above board, and it's being discussed in public, and what you see on paper and the scheduled events is what's happening. So it's all, it's all above board. And if I thought it wasn't above board, I would be the first one to raise my hand and throw the integrity flag, so, because the public deserves that, so. Okay, great. What else do I have here? Again, I'll throw out my safety message as a former aviator. Safety first, safety first, safety first, as we go into the graduation season, people are going to be celebrating and having fun, and safety first. And so if you're a teacher or principal and you're watching this, or pass that along to your kids, just safety first. Again, I don't want to see any of those stories show up in the Manatee Herald or something about something bad happened, because we weren't safe. I did have a question about, Ms. Laura asked, for those of us who like to go to the FSA, FSBA convention in June, you you asked us who wanted to go, and I know I replied affirmatively, and usually we have an agenda item about funding that. Is that going to come up here pretty soon?
Not till.
Be on the next meeting.
The next meeting.
On the 23rd? Okay, great. That's good, because I'm really looking forward to it, and I wouldn't want to miss out or anything, so, all right, great. Plus, I'd like to get the hotel reservation in the actual hotel where the convention is, you know, so that I don't have to walk a half a mile or take Evers back. And so the earlier we do that, the better. That's my only point there. And then, let me see. I will just continue my further comments, just to make the, about how we operate together is that I have respect for all of your individual competencies that you have up here. Some of us are former teachers, you're an investment advisor, Ms. Foreman is a CPA, Ms. Spray has a lot of experience in logistics and working in large corporations. So if any of us want to talk about one of these items, I'm, I'm pretty much open to hearing what you have to say, especially, like I said, because the sunshine laws prevent us from doing this. And while we all may have done our homework, you as a CPA, for instance, Ms. Foreman, might, might find something two or three days before the meeting that I, as a non-CPA, wouldn't notice, and so I'd like to hear it. Or, you know, maybe you, Mr. Choate, as an investment advisor, might see something about, if we have, you know, an update on investments or something, and as you're reviewing the agenda two or three days prior, you go, wow, you know, I didn't catch that in my initial meeting with with Ms. Saunders. So just, let's be cordial with each other, and if people want to have an opportunity to speak, I'm willing to hear and learn. And I also realize too, that Mr. Spray and I only have six months of experience on the board, where the other three have years, if not multiple years, of experience on the board. What may seem, like I've said before, that my high school calculus teacher would say, it's I O C, all right, intuitively obvious to the casual observer, to people who have a lot of experience, may not be to Ms. Spray or to myself. And so we're learning, and indulge us with, as we're learning and wanting to discuss things, so. And that is the end of my public, or my board comment for the day, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Spray, you're next.
Okay. Again, superintendent search. You're right, the public view is, oh, they've already made up their mind. I have not. Actually reviewing and struggling with looking at all of this stuff. And then you read articles, then you're like, okay, I got to research that a little more. And then you hear something else, then you got to look at that a little more, just like the agenda. You do all the homework that you can, and then something is brought to your attention, either by additional research, or a constituent will bring something to your attention. So, yeah, I, I'm with you, Ms. Foreman. I'm not going to judge somebody from a, from a district and say they're guilt by association, I guess you would call it. I'm just not going to do that. I think we need to have our, and I have some hard questions in the back of my mind for my one-on-one with each candidate. And, you know, there's things that, although we have all these great news stories and everything that we project, we still have a solid budget here, and we got to make sure we keep all of those things intact. So those, the, the public view of us is really good, and our financials are really good. But we can't let that falter by, you know, getting the wrong person in the wrong place. So keeping those solid things going is my priority in selecting this superintendent. I do want to say too, that's all I have on the superintendent search, because to be honest, I'm almost brain fogged with all of the data that I've looked at. I do want to say that, I hope it's okay to say this, that the Chair of the Audit Committee resigned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'll be on the next agenda.
Yeah, resignation. We did get notification that a Chair of the Audit Committee has, is going to resign. So I did want to say shout out to thank her for that, and the service that she served for the district. And you're right, we do have a lot of stuff on our calendars. And again, when you have a lot going on, like we do with the graduation, superintendent search, the budget coming up, and looking at all the data there, it's a busy time. And then you got to travel. I have a travel plan coming up, and also family coming up. So I'm, I'm sad that I am not going to be able to attend some of the things that I wanted to go to this week, because of some scheduling shifts I committed, and I can't go. But I want to thank everybody for being at least patient with me when I want to pull these things. And it's, it's not to be malicious or anything like that, or to put pressure on the staff at all. It's more, oh, I've got that one more question I forgot to ask, and I'm not going to, you know, make fifty calls to all these different people that have these, submitted this stuff. But I do think that we're doing well up here, and we'll just keep plugging along. That's all I got.
Thank you. Everybody's pretty much said everything that he's said about the superintendent. Other than, other than I will say this to every, I mean, they may not be listening, but safe travels to the ones that have got to travel. And I hope maybe they're in today and seeing the area, and I know we've got, you know, a good tour for them tomorrow, when they're not doing the interview, to go around and see the schools and see the community, so that's going to be a good thing. And I really, I do want to, and I will talk about more of this later, but I think we've done a really good job with the process. And I think that it's important that we've stuck to a process, and we're going through this, and good things will come out of it. I'm a, I'm a cup is half-full normally type of guy looking at things. So I really think we, we did, we'd all decided on a process, and we've stuck through with that. And it's important that we've, we've stuck through with that, because I think that it's important for us, once we make our final decision, to say what, you know, we went through this process like we were supposed to. I think it's what the community and the, they deserve that, that we go through a thorough process. With that as well, I'll echo what Ms. Messenger said with the shooting range and the driving range. I didn't know how big the driving, when I say driving range, like the driving simulation for the police officers and chairs. I didn't even know how big that was. So, and I didn't know they had to go to St. Pete to simulate anything like that. And as one of the, one of the, I don't think it was, it was Chief Bell, but I think somebody afterwards was telling me, like, that's the majority of the time that officers are spent is typically on the road. So when you think about that, on the road, driving with everybody else driving, with kids getting out of school, or someone riding a bike on the side of the street, I mean, they, they drive way more than us regular citizens. And they're really hardly ever involved in wrecks, which is kind of crazy, right? I mean, if you think about it, to be honest with you. I mean, knock on wood, no jinx, I don't want to jinx anybody, I don't want to jinx the police officers or anything today. But, so it's really impressive. And so I'm just excited that we are able to do, have a facility here, that maybe other people will come use, other agencies will come and use. And it truly was a great collaborative project. And I think that, that shows that we're able to do that. Like, multiple government agencies can get together and make projects work that benefit the community. And I think we got to do more of that. We had the Council of Governments meeting last week, that brings, brings everybody in. And they want to, you know, I think the county and the city and everybody wants to get together and say, how can we solve some issues? Some things with homelessness, and how do we, how do we help that? And so I think it's great that we come together as a community, yes, our focus is education, but we still have a role to play in how we make this community better. And so I'm excited about the collaborative things, and I think potentially, this first one with the shooting range and the driving range will be the first one to look back and say, this is, this was the first, what else can we possibly do? And then, kudos to the superintendent, and I know Mr. Die was on it, and Ms. Tatum, you know, you guys with the, with the land and doing the contracts, so really thank you all. I know it's touch and go there towards the end, there's some things, like, you know, uh, I don't know, you know, but I'm glad that we finalized it, and we did it, because it's going to be something that improves everybody's overall lives, because I think that it's going to serve the men and women that serve our community. And that's, that's, you know, I want to thank, you know, we've got a police officer here, so thanks for your service. But with that too, thanks to the teachers, the teachers. We can't, none of this is possible without teachers, doesn't matter. We can sit up here and blab about whatever, it doesn't matter, we don't have great teachers in the classroom, and we do. We have wonderful teachers in the classroom. I know that the last three or four years with COVID, with some of the new legislative actions that are happening, I do think it's been a stressful three or four years. And I, and I, you know, I, I hope that the teachers really look and take this summer to say, you know, you're really doing this for the bigger reason than, than yourself, it is about the kids, it is about the community. And I really want to thank, I've got a son graduating, and thank his teachers for the last twelve years, or whatever it's been. You put up with some stuff, and I appreciate that. And it does take a village to get them to the finish line, so thank you. Thank you to some of the teachers that are accepting some late work towards the end of this semester. But I'm excited about this, this week, I'm excited about the superintendent search, I'm excited about where we're going in the district. And I look forward to a full next couple days. It's going to be, it's going to be busy, but it's good. I think we're, we're going to put the district in the right place. I have the uttermost faith in all of us here, five of us to do that, and I'm excited, I'm excited the way it's going. So with that, we are adjourned.